Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Jackson County Board of Supervisors meeting for Tuesday, January thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-four. Um, welcome. With me today, I have Don Schrankert, Ken Flagle, myself, Mike Tynas, are your county supervisors and Lisa, our county auditor, is here, and Bjorn, IT, and Luanne, our executive director is assistant, is back here also. Mary is here from the media. First on our agenda this morning is Mr. Todd Kinney, our Jackson County engineer. Good mornings.
Morning. Pleasure. Uh, so first item is the resolution to award the contract for the Y sixty-one rehab project from state highway up to, uh, W Cascade Road. Got three bidders, kind of a new bidder is inroads, um, but typically, you know, we got our Manats and Matthew. Matthew came in as a low bidder at, uh, two million, one hundred and ten thousand, three hundred and sixty-nine dollars.
Who was the company again?
What?
What was the company?
Matthew.
Inroads?
No.
Manats?
Manats, you said Manats.
You said Matthew was a little better, I think.
No, Manats was.
Okay, you said.
Oh, it's Manats, sorry.
Just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, it's Manats.
Okay, Manats.
That's what's on the resolution, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yep, so I guess just recommended word.
Um, who did the north have?
That was Matthew, I believe.
Motion to approve.
There you go.
A motion second to approve resolution number one zero one three dash zero one dash thirty dash two thousand and twenty-four. Um, award to payment rehabilitation project as presented.
And that was with right at the bud, the estimate, wasn't it? For just under?
Lightly above, yes.
It was, so it was programmed at one million, eight hundred and fifty-five thousand. But that programming would have been done like a year and a half in advance. The cost estimate we did right before we submit check plans to the DOT, that was two point two seven three million. So the bids came in under our cost estimate submitted for the check plans. But when it was programmed, it's programmed at one point eight five five million, but that was programmed a year and a half before it would have been.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried.
All right, the next thing is the resolution to approve that twenty-eight D agreement with the counties for the, uh, raise grant application. So the resolution basically was prepared by the Iowa County Engineer Service Bureau and the twenty-eight D was prepared by the Service Bureau. So this is in reference to our, uh, bridge project, it's part of the raise grant, it's, uh, being prepared for smittle, uh, this, well, next month. They're gonna turn it in at the end of the month, in February. So move.
Second.
A motion the, and a second to approve resolution one zero one four dash zero one dash three zero dash two thousand and twenty-four. Is that correct?
Correct.
Any further questions? Although the favor say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carried.
Okay, the next item, um, about an entrance permit, I just, we requested that we table that because it's, uh, we need to wait till the, all the snow is out of the ditch so we can get the depth, so we can figure the length of pipe needed and all that, so. And the property owner is okay with, uh, delaying it a little bit, so.
So you have spoke with him now?
Yeah.
Okay, so we don't need to do anything really, do we, or do we need to motion?
No, just as possible, I think, so make a motion.
Nope. All right, we'll just move on.
All right, item three, uh, some utilities permit for Black Hills Energy to bore two woodish gas lines uh, under three hundred and ninety-eighth Avenue, basically, it's gonna bore from where they have service across the road to their, a house, and I think to a shop heater, so. You know, see any issue with it.
So moved.
Very good.
I've motioned a second to approve Black Hills Energy board permit as presented, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried.
Okay. So there's those two.
Thank you.
Um, and I see on the agenda, there's about, um, discuss some possible action to award rock breaks, does that come off, because we haven't.
That wasn't on the agenda.
Next, perfect, okay, good, I didn't talk about it. Oh, okay, good. Um, and then in general, obviously, uh, having issues with, uh, gravel in those. Um, we did have guys come in on Sunday when there was freezing temps where we could get on the roads without causing damage, so we're continuing to do that. Today, they're gonna be mixing material, and then at the end of the day, they'll load up, so overnight tonight is supposed to get down below freezing again, so we'll be doing the same thing, trying to get out while the roads are still frozen tomorrow morning, hauling rock. Um, try to level them up a little bit with the blades too, and we'll keep doing that until we start pushing through the road and rudding it up ourselves, so.
Yeah, I got talked to by somebody on, I think, it's a hundredth Avenue. Um, it was pretty bad.
Yeah, so any roads that we've either reclaimed or getting, well, the, getting a lot of truck traffic or ag traffic, you know. Uh, we were working from the, we got a log or list of complaints, uh, about different roads and Rick, the road foreman has those, and he's checked them out, some were on this list weren't that bad, so we're prioritizing based on, you know, the condition, the guys kind of know where they're bad, but, you know, when the roads have this much moisture in them, uh, and you get heavy loads on them, they're gonna, they're gonna run up and fail, and there's just no two ways about it, so bottom line is we gotta get the moisture out of the road. Um, some people say, well, you know, the road wasn't this bad when we, before we put crown on the road, but some of that could have been a couple of things, one, the guys, we could have got a little too aggressive with bringing in material from the, like, I would call it dirt from the ditch, basically. Um, so we'll have to keep a better eye on that moving forward. You know, we just want to retrieve the, the grass, the lip or the shoulder and not get down into the four slope. Because when we're compacting with the rubber tire roller, that's really only meant to get one or two inches of compaction of new material. If you're getting any more than that, we should, we need to be out there with a sheep's foot, which we didn't use, so we can't be bringing a lot of material on the road, and then the other thing too is I know some of the roads, because it was so dry, we were compacting when you could, we didn't have much moisture for compaction, so we didn't get the compaction energy we should have got, and in some roads, we probably had too much uh, material we're working with too, so there's a couple of things we can hopefully, you know, get better at doing moving forward, but bottom line is when you get to, when you get fifteen inches of snow, and then a week later, get four days of rain, and then the frost starts coming out of the road, because we're getting spring in January, we're gonna have issues. So there's no way around it, so. But, he said, when the roads start drying out and we start getting the road, some of the moisture out of the road, we can start getting them back to closer to normal kind of conditions, but we're gonna go through this again come spring, I mean, we still got winter left, so.
No, I had several calls and, um, we worked through a lot of them and, uh, most were understanding, you know. I know the situation and everybody has an answer, or some have an answer, but we're working through that, I'm not we're not at this point gonna condemn a program that we tried to implement, we're gonna implement the program and make it work.
Yeah, I mean, in.
We're not perfect by any means, but we sure try to.
Yeah, so the, you know, water in the road is causing issues, so the purpose of crown is to get rid of the water. How we put the crown on the road does something we can tweak, but to say that the crown is causing the soft roads is not, not right, I mean. Now, how we establish the crown, that's things that we can change or try and do better at, but getting water off the road is paramount. You can see right now, the water, the, the roads that are super saturated or wet, that's a problem, right, that creates problems, so.
We appreciate it, and, uh, you know, I guess, you know, you can tell your staff also, we appreciate their work and their dedication to coming in at five AM and when it froze, and, you know, a lot of suggestions made, and they're willing to adapt to that, and we appreciate what they're doing, so.
Okay.
Thank you, Jess.
Yep.
Did the seal when I sent you work?
Yeah, I sent it in, they said thanks.
Okay, good, all right, good.
All right, are there any visitors, uh, on the Zoom presentation or presentation that would like to address the board? Seeing or hearing none? Um, I didn't see Nathan yet, um, well, you said Michael was not able to, he's ill today.
Not coming in.
Okay. Um. We can't, or Lisa, or you?
It doesn't matter, I mean, I'm more than happy to go.
Okay, let's do it.
I need a motion this morning to approve the minutes of the January twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-four board proceedings as written by auditor Smith and authorize publication in official newspapers, so move, second.
Motion second to approve the minutes from, uh, twenty-fourth as presented, January twenty-fourth.
Twenty-third.
Twenty-third, twenty-two forty-four as presented, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried.
Need a motion to approve and authorize the auditor's office to issue um,
Warrants.
To issue warrants in the publication, the claims listing the amount of two hundred and sixty-four thousand, six hundred and twenty-two dollars and two cents. So moved.
Second.
Motion second to approve the claims as presented, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried.
I need a motion to approve the renewal of a Class C retail alcohol license with outdoor service to Obies at thirty-six ten, one hundred and seventy-third Avenue of Coca-Cola, effective March first, two thousand and twenty-four through February twenty-eighth, third, two thousand and twenty-five. So moved.
Second. Motion second to approve the permit as presented to Obies, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried.
No, that's all that I asked.
The warrant that's showing up.
Thank you.
Okay, okay. Um, wait, oh, wait, how fast? Well, Nathan didn't hear yet, help Elizabeth, and Beth doesn't answer, so. All right, thank you.
Just Nathan, sir.
Nathan, Nathan.
There's Nathan, okay. That little tidbit of information that I sent last night, was that interesting?
Nathan.
Yeah, I'm not sure, uh, yeah. Let's talk about that.
Yeah.
How are you guys?
Good morning, uh, joining us is, uh, Nathan Jones, our, um, what do we call Nathan, he's our director, or he's our
Sostr.
Con- conservation director.
Yep.
Good morning.
Morning, guys, so I guess it's been a couple of weeks since our board meeting, but a little update on um, some of the things we had going on at the last board meeting. Um, I discussed this with you a few months ago, we, we bid out a mower instead of, that was in our budget for, uh, skidler or tractor replacement at one point, we just switched it over just because we have kept having problems with the mower, the funding, um, we ended up going with a Toro mower. Um, I should have brought the number, say, I don't remember, just over twenty thousand dollars what it was, so very expensive mower, but, um, the bids were up to thirty-some thousand for different things there, so the board, but with that, we also had it out for bid for, uh, um, replacement of the van, we didn't get any bids on that. So, um, our board has had us, we're trying to source one from somebody local, if they'll work with us on that. So that, that's kind of some of the things that went on for, um, purchasing and
Kind of a?
Just a minivan, um, well.
You replacing?
Yep.
I wonder, I wonder if there's a way with that RTA program, an enterprise or whatever, if there's a way we could put it somewhere.
Even one that they took out of certain.
What do you use it for?
Uh, summer, it, summertime is a lot of times just transporting kids back and forth across the road, or if you're canoeing and kayaking with programs to run them back and forth, people around, um, so I, I've been trying to talk with Rotman's, they haven't used one on the lot, um, it's a little higher than what we want to spend. Um, the, when we talked at our board meeting, there was a couple unlots in Dubuque, they were gone by the time we got there, so I think that's becoming the norm with things. Disappearing quick now, so, um, maybe, I don't know who's up.
I'm sure there was some.
Okay, so, yeah, that'd be good. Um, other than that, pretty simple board meeting, it was quick, um, trying to think if there was anything else that was pressing. Um, the van thing was the big thing that we didn't get a bid, so we didn't have anybody to move forward with that, so.
Do you sit at all your router, or is it hosted in the center?
Mostly in the summer, um, there is times in the winter, we have certain programs that pop up, or we gotta run stuff to a school program, and it's more of a, for the environmental, they shove everything in it, keep it enclosed instead of a truck bed where it's out in the weather, hauling stuff to school programs, so.
So I guess, yeah, so is it a case where we could have used a pickup if it had a cover on it, or we got, we've got the pickup already, or?
I've thought about that, putting a topper on one of them, and I know how that is, once we have it on, we'll want it for something else, and we'll be pulling the topper on and off, and.
Or even, you know, one of your
Oh, like a tunnel cover? I don't know if you get all that stuff under a tunnel cover, not be, I'd be a question for Jess.
How many miles you put on it?
Not a lot.
I just wonder if we locate squad cars and stuff, if you got a tow or something, maybe with a hundred fifty thousand miles, that you got something in the, but you could put in the back, you know.
Yeah.
You can always look that way.
Yeah, be it, when we talked, and I talked to Lisa about this van, we were planning on just putting it out for bid, but I'm like, maybe the sheriff's department would want the old van, or like a, putting out steam van or whatever you'd call it, because it's not, we're not gonna get much out of it.
And we borrowed the transport van. We have, at, at election time, we borrow the sheriff's office transport van.
He's a part of the vehicle.
Huh? I did, yeah. So we borrow that transport van, because it's aged, you know, but.
But we're all geared around for you guys.
Yep, and that's really nice.
It's, ours isn't in the greatest shape, but it, maybe it would get utilized.
Works really good, and put the red lights on, you get through traffic a lot faster.
Yeah, you know, so.
So, yeah, and I don't know, I, I know, I think our maintenance van had come locally from maybe Newt, I don't know.
Yeah, and I looked at, excuse me, some of those, and I, uh, that, that one's like the work series, but they make those as transport at work, but they're expensive.
Yeah.
So, um, I, I think, yeah, if you guys have options, or just kind of looking at used or something, try to find something that's reliable. For hauling kids around, I want it to be something pretty reliable.
When they tried it in the RTA vehicles, it might have been a good.
Yeah, I just know the RTA program, they're looking for, if they know people are carpools a lot, they'd be willing to supply the van and get, and all that, so they can track the trips and it's
Okay.
running and stuff, I just didn't know if that was something that could be applicable.
Yeah.
Like, schools can't do it, but if people in the school district called, they could, it, you know, and the, you know, if they knew there was ten people in McCoca wanting to drive to Dubuque to work at John Deere, they would supply them a van, designate a driver, you could use it so much for personal miles, and they would just take that back and forth as a, a government way to
Okay.
carpool type of thing.
But you're in a position where you may be working here and working there, you don't know what time you're gonna finish, what time you're gonna start, or what time.
Some of it would be night and weekends, but I don't know. Yep, something, I mean.
Well, I would guess, yeah, we could do our own little investigation too, and get in touch right with you and say, yeah, this might be an option for you, and I would just still proceed as you are, maybe so you have a
Yeah, bailout, yep. So, and then other than that, for us, right now, we're kind of working on our safety plans and policies going forward. Um, just to try to meet the deadline the counties put on us for getting a new new safety policy for our department.
How's the harbor wall going?
Not.
Well, I just saw here, the bills today, there was a the, there's ice in there, and I, I was up there a few days ago, and it didn't really look like there was any progress, I was just trying to justify, was there that much work done?
He had done that much, but he kind of was, his father passed away a week ago, and he, he hasn't been back since. So I don't know what's going on there, um, I figured I'd give him a few more days and, I'm expecting, I would think he'll be back next week, I don't know. What, if he got behind and tried to catch up on other stuff.
How much is left? Cause.
Dollar wise or work wise?
Fifty-six thousand, huh?
Fifty-eight.
Fifty-eight.
Fifty-eight thousand.
Is that, because that's, I think there was twenty thousand.
It was twenty thousand, but.
Fifty-eight after that?
This is, fifty-eight will fulfill the contract.
Yep, so.
I just saw, because it, uh.
He's got probably sixty pions left to go.
He is up to the steel beams yet.
Yeah, he is. He, because he knocked one over, called me, when he, I guess they weren't in there very, very far, so, um, he's at the, that's where he's at. So he's not moving real fast, um, and then I have Alex looking at another thing, because I guess since the last time we talked, we still have that grant for that boat ramp there, I said, well, he's moving so slow, can we adjust our permitting on widen that out so we can get a handicap sidewalk next to the ramp, get people down under their dock easier and some of that, so he's looking at that, seeing if we can adjust some of that for the cost. Um, and speaking of boat ramps, we received a grant for Bridgeport to put a paved, just the paved section down to the water. Um, so next year, hopefully, we'll have that moving forward, hasn't been approved by the DNR Commission, but, um, the state's given us fifty-six thousand dollars for that.
Awesome.
So, um, that's kind of what's new for us, since the last time we talked, um.
Be nice to get it in before the river goes up.
Yeah. I know it's gonna.
Yeah.
But, um, yeah, the wall, I don't have it's been a frustrating project from the get-go, so.
Yeah, we'll have to certainly try to look forward.
Yeah, I think, maybe I just, just see what's
Is the permitting and everything still okay, or?
Yeah, if I have to look, I, I put it in for as long as I could, and I think those are two years, so, just in case, um, but.
You know, even then, we're running on that.
I know.
Well, yeah, and you're probably gonna have to look back at the contract, you know, see if there's any breach in contracts there.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, other than that, I don't have anything else for you guys, you have any questions for me?
No, I would look into using a pickup maybe with the topper or with a rollback cover or something maybe, and if we don't have to have an extra vehicle, I don't know, you know, if we got the pickup setting around, if we're not putting that many miles on it.
Yeah.
I mean, we can only drive one at a time.
Yep. We can look and talk about it.
Pickup's gonna be hard to haul kids, I don't know.
About, so we got extended cabs, so.
I'm gonna have to. It depends on the program, yeah, so.
Well, you take about it.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, Nate.
All right. Elizabeth, Elizabeth is our Jackson County Health Administrator, good morning.
Good morning. I have many titles, actually.
Many titles.
Yeah, it's the transform.
Who would you like to be referred to this morning?
You know, it's more and more like I'm the environmental health director, but the state requires us to have a public health administrator, so I have two titles, kind of.
Cool.
So.
Promotion.
So.
Well, I'm bringing you extra money.
Nice.
I don't know, we could send you stuff, um, I might kind of go around here, yeah, so I increased all my fees, I like doubled all of them. Be really happy about this, I've, I haven't heard anything bad yet, but I'm sure it's coming, you know. Mostly probably installers and all of that, but it was like due to happen, honestly, um, the DNR had suggested we up some of our fees, and just living in my department and it mostly being me, Ruth does some of the clerical work, but you know, by the time you issue a permit and you complete everything, I mean, it's usually entails two to three site visits and a lot of paperwork, so.
Well, yeah, there's a lot more that goes into it, what they're really, you know, if it's rational, substantial, obviously.
It usually includes the inspection, some counties, I did, I, I mean, because I looked at all the other counties to see what they were doing, and a lot of them, they charge a separate fee for inspection, so this really includes everything.
You're talking about septic's and such, or?
Yep, septic's and wells, um, uh, we have had some issues where people were putting in systems like without permits, they weren't necessarily illegal, but they had already talked to me and thought that they had like a verbal permit, so like we did a um, a fee for that, so it's actually six hundred dollars. So it's double. Um, so I'm really trying to get people to fill out the paperwork, and then, of course, we've got our field permitting, which I just have to say, I am really liking it, like, there is so much more that I can do with the geo permitting, and they didn't have time to finish some of it with me. Um, and I had talked to Bjorn about it too, and I think we're gonna, I mean, I don't know if we can get Ruth possibly to go on and be able to create permits, but, I mean, not just permits, I mean, I can use it for a lot of different things, so.
Well, that's what we like to hear, that we're gonna use that. See what we're permitting, yeah.
So the thing that ties into that, now that I'm bringing some more money in, uh, so for granted counties, I'm gonna, I wanna do a separate, um, like a webpage, so the grant pays up to a thousand dollars a year for that, so it's like a one-time setup fee, so I met with Neapolitan Labs, they do the website for Clinton County, and I think Bjorn, some other counties too, maybe, you know. Anyway, I really like their website, and I really dislike our website, it's really just not user-friendly. It's, it's just confusing for any, anybody coming onto it that's looking for documents and things like that, so I guess with the geo permitting, I know we have a contract with who we, whoever it is now that we use, don't we, is it a country, yeah. Um, but if we could in future, look at getting a better website, that would be really helpful, I think.
County website?
Yeah.
Oh. Just, or?
Yes. Just takes money. It takes money, um, or I'm gonna go off on my own and, and next year ask to build, you know, build my own.
Probably kill.
Yeah, um, because I think it'll just tie in better with geo permits. Just make it user-friendly, it just, it's not user-friendly, and I have a really hard time going in and you know, trying to work with whoever's, you know, adding stuff or setting things up, it just, it doesn't look good the way I want it to, the way it should.
So, yeah, I mean, I've never really been in to try to do a permit like that, Don said he had a tough time getting, looking for information that he was looking for, and.
Yeah, because, like, even before I was employed with the county, like, I was trying to go in and look at, like, you know, meeting minutes and things like that, because I was stalking and, you know, trying to see what was going on, but it was, it was really confusing, just pulling.
Right now, if you.
Well, we're not so hip and good because you came to us.
I did, but, but the website was terrible, and I've said that from day one, but now that I think that we're doing the geo permitting, I think in the next year, it'd be really good if the county looked at a new website.
Well, we seem to certainly need to, uh, explore our options, I would say, you know, and what kind of improvements, we certainly want to improve it if we can. Um, when was the last, we just redid that webpage, didn't we, a couple of years ago?
Hmm, probably been three or four now.
Has it been that long?
So like mine, like, I wanna make it so that I can do, like, so when I met with, um, Neapolitan Labs, I was like, well, I really want people to be able to go on and schedule their own water test, and then they get the results on the web instead of us having to go through the mailing, because every time we mail something, it's expensive. So I would like to have it just kind of gradually push people to or, you know, direct them to the website, and then they can get their information on there.
Well, that's what it's coming to, and we were, we surely want it friendly, user-friendly, if you will. Um, there's a lot of techie people out there, but there's a lot of non-techie.
Right.
Also, so it's gotta be something that easy to navigate.
And I get that, and you know, even like some of my septic installers, like last fall, I told them that you know, things are gonna be on, online, applications will have to be this way, and they're, some of them are kind of like, ugh, but you know what, they're capable of doing it, they can. Um, you know, I thought, well, maybe we need to have a computer outside of, you know, my office and the zoning office or something, or somewhere in the building where the public, somebody that doesn't have a computer, they can come in and, you know, fill out that paperwork, but I'm done filling out applications for people, it's really, it's their job to fill out the application, I mean, I you know, and that part of the geo permitting is it's pushing them to complete the information, and until they do, they don't get their permit.
Well, it makes sense, they have put their information in there, I mean, I mean, there's lots of things, it's, it's helping them along, I suppose, but, uh.
Well, I get usually somebody just like doesn't even fill out the application, or they'll fill out their name and throw it to me, and they don't even sign it, I'm like, please sign it and date it, I mean, they won't even do that, so.
If it's not filled out, I guess I don't get the.
Yeah. Yeah, so, anyway, um, so for granted counties, I am, I did meet with the Neapolitan Labs, and they were supposed to get back to me um, about setting up a webpage just specifically for the water testing, so people will be able to go in and schedule and get the results on there. Get the results on there.
I think that's gonna be about a thousand dollars.
I, I told him my price range, um, and he said, we can probably most definitely do that. And he said that, you know, but every year after that, there would be like a maintenance fee that I would have to pay, he said probably not more than like a hundred dollars. A year.
I just, you know, it's trying to streamline, and geo permitting to me is trying to get everything kind of. So you can work on zoning and all that kind of stuff, and all of them. To, to, to develop another website specifically, separate from for this, it doesn't make sense.
It doesn't, and so, and I had told Neapolitan Labs that I was going to meet with, um, geo permitting too, to see if. There's something that they can do, but they've already. I've used up their time, like. They're moving on to another department now, so that's why, you know, we need to look at getting people trained to be able to. So once we get the few, first few permits up and going for the county, and they're online, and they're active, and people are using them, I'd like to start. Integrating more of my own. Um, but this is just because the money's there, it's a grant, and I'm just looking at options. But anyway, my, I guess what I'm saying is my conversation with Neapolitan Labs. I, I like them, I like that, their, uh, format. Um, that they have, or whatever you call it, I'm not sure what it is, um. And I just think we should look at. Maybe something else in the future.
I always think is if you're going off and doing this for them, how is that gonna tie in? Are you just doing it for the water, or are you looking at doing it for your department?
So just be for the water, I'm, I'm not doing anything yet, I'm just letting you guys kind of know that this. I guess if we had a better website, I wouldn't even be thinking of doing this, but this is more to cut back on the mailings that we're doing. I mean, ev- every, everything we send out sometimes.
Cause we don't wanna see, I guess I don't wanna see that, but each department in the courthouse goes off on their own separate.
Some of them are.
Website.
I think.
The system's on their own.
Yeah. Um, so I would like to have something better where there's tabs, I mean, cause like right now, the way our website is set up. So even for the geo permitting, there's gonna be just a little link off in the side, I think it's gonna be hard for people to like see that. You know, click on that link, not just for if I did this, but for the geo permitting too. So, if you like, I.
What your county senatorian. Permit for this.
Yeah, just make it easier for people to, you know, clear as day, like this is where you click it, like. Even this morning, I had a dog bite report from a hospital in Clinton, and it's like. I'm trying to direct them on the website where to get the form, it's a fillable form, like online, but. They couldn't find it. So.
Was it there?
It was there, it's there, nobody uses it apparently, but, um, so anyway.
Gets back to, you know, somewhere we need to think about.
Yeah, and just to, I mean, because we're doing this geo permitting, and I really would like to have a better website to complement. The geo permitting and make it easier for the public, that's the biggest thing, easier for the public.
So, with that being said, Bjorn, do, is there? Uh, someone who does that, builds the websites, or that you're talking Neapolitan, is that what you said, is that? Clinton County site, or? Um, Neapolitan, who did Clinton County, yeah. And what kind of?
They just redid theirs, it's really nice, you guys should go look up.
Clinton County?
Yeah.
They did last week.
Um, so what kind of funds are we talking about?
And the idea, well, you got a lot of pages out there, a lot of information, so it's not gonna be a thousand dollars, that's just for one page.
Yeah, no, but we certainly try to move forward if we can, if our, if our website's not usable or friendly, user friendly, if you call it, with, uh. I don't know, I guess maybe we need to do a little bit.
With the people we got, is there a way that they can make it?
No, cause it's the platform, it's. The way the platform is set up, it's only got so much capability for certain things. They're just not. Platform, I guess, not user friendly.
Okay.
Yeah, we can. You guys want to talk about that or anything, let me know. Uh, let's see, water testing, didn't do any water testing, advertising, because Clinton County was kind enough to do that for us, um, accidentally. Uh, we already talked about geo permitting a little bit, we're gonna, um, we were planning on having our first application go live February first. But I don't think that's gonna happen, but it'll be sometime in February. Um, we've also set up an installer exam, so any installer coming in, they take the exam online, it'll be self-grading, it's the first time geo permitting has. Ever done an exam of self-grading.
And they set that up for you?
They're in the process of setting it up for me, they said that it would be a first time thing for them, they're really excited about it, and it would open up a lot of doors for other. Counties and, um, um, public agencies across the country.
Yeah, I don't mind being the guinea pig if it works and, and things, you know, I, I know you mentioned that you have. Used up your allotted time.
Yeah.
But if there's more that's necessary to make it easier, then we would have to certainly look into what it would cost us for more.
Yeah.
Time or whatever.
I can do everything on this, I mean, and like I said, we talked, I talked to Ruth, she's very interested in doing some of this, she's already put some things together for Lori's office. So if we could get her trained. I mean, it would be.
Well, we really wanna utilize it to the much we can.
Yeah. Yes. Um, okay, so my plan is to have all my permits live by April first this year, um, all the permits that I've done so far, not. Everything I wanna do, but the ones that I've worked on so far. Um, and the goal is to have everybody using this by twenty twenty five, so this year I'll allow people to use paper applications, I'm not gonna have them. Available like readily, they'll have to request them from me or print them off at home.
Yeah, I think you have to be gentle somewhat.
I'm usually gentle, but, you know.
I mean, we're, we're moving into that era, so that's the way it is, and, and if you have a grandson, eight-year-old grandson, like, you're gonna.
Yes. Um, dresslers, I know you usually sit in on them.
I missed the last one, I had another commitment.
Yeah, and I don't have.
I don't have an update.
My thing does reflect that, but basically, um, I mean, they're ready to take off in the spring and, and get going with things. Um, I know they have some supplies out there so far, and. Um.
What's the, what's the completion on that? I know extended it, but I don't remember.
Should be, they should be done by the end of the summer, yeah, I thought it was by the, by the end of twenty twenty four. The truth.
To all the residents too, not just the main, yeah, okay, yeah, that, I thought they were putting the main in last fall, but they never got that done, right?
No, that got postponed, basically, so on dresslers, basically what they've gotten done is. The lower hookup in the, it's not hooked up, but it's, everything's in there. For the lower part, that way in case flooding happens, it.
For the campground.
It's there for the campground.
Yeah.
And then, come the spring, they'll be. Going whole hog, they got all their stuff. They had one. Person they were waiting on to see, they talked about putting in a three-site.
Yeah, so it's.
Something.
Yeah, they're waiting.
Camping.
Yeah, they're waiting for determined hookups, we've got some.
Basically, he's gonna. I think he was supposed to let them know by February first, or he was gonna be out of luck, because they weren't gonna get supplies.
Yeah.
Order, be able to hook up, so.
Yeah, so that'd be old laundry van. Uh, safety policies, just working on safety policies, and actually, no, I need to work on safety policies, I haven't started yet, um, but I do have. Few of them because of just being on building sites and things like that, so chemicals that I use. Um, rabies ordinance, working on that, I've continued to just kind of look at other counties in Iowa to see what they're doing. Um, and obviously, you know, number of staff that they have to be able to enforce things and things like that. I'm hoping to have a draft, um, to the board in March, um, but that doesn't mean that'll go into effect. This year necessarily, um, it may need to have something that. Where we would have a, a budget for it, separate budget, not really sure yet, so that might not go into effect until next year. And then permits year-to-date, really don't have anything, got a couple binding agreements, and that's for future installation, and that's about it.
Cool. Yeah, I mean. It sounds like you were justified, so, yeah, we're happy about that, whether you want a cartwheel or a template, you know what?
Alright, that's all I got.
Alright.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Becky?
My next?
I, I guess you can be next, if you so like to learn. Beth is not here, so. So, our Director of Human Resources, Becky Chapman.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Couple of things today, our cap renewal with Keroch that everybody loves to do so much.
Um.
Sending out these next little reports now about all the bad things that are happening.
Yeah, it's actually a lot, you know, when you look through, um, they sent quite a bit of information, but some of the deficiencies we had, there was like two reports. They actually have to send us a couple of logs that we review, and then they become compliant, they were from fourth quarter, they actually didn't send us the information to review, that was just, that's just for them, and us to both know that we need to. Attack on that, so, stop emailing us, Warren, so she'd have that to me, so we'll have those two deficiencies fixed. Um, I don't know what they consist of right now, it might be Bjorn and I, it might be him, it might be me, I'm not sure, so, but we'll get those done. Um, they're overall, they're a very nice company to work with, they do a lot of the counties, and they do the mouth region, which is convenient when you sit in multiple boards and stuff like that, so. We've actually been with Keroch since two thousand seventeen. Um, our renewal contract this year is for the same amount that we were in, or for twenty-four is the same as it was twenty-three, which is twelve thousand eight hundred and fifty-two dollars. Um, so generally Bjorn and I work pretty independently with them, they're always willing to jump on the Zoom, I know Mike, you've sat through them before, if there's any specific information you wanna know from them, Roger Shindell. Um, his gal staff, they're willing to jump on sometime, if you ever wanna hear directly from them. Um, but for the most part, they just provide us the information, we keep disseminating it to employees, and. Um, training's our biggest thing, it's very hard for everybody to keep up on those. Our first quarter training, we're actually at a very, very high percentage rate of completion, there's a couple departments that just have like one, so I emailed everybody last week that. Had training to complete, even though it's not due until March, just to get it done by Friday, that way our numbers are a hundred, a hundred, a hundred, which looks a little bit better than. This department at fifty-three and this at seventy, it's just easiest if everybody gets them done.
Well, talking about websites, I tell you what, they have improved that.
Their new platform is better, yeah.
It, it used to be miserable.
Yeah.
It'd get halfway through a learning session, and it said, start over, and I'd say, you know what I say to it? Sure.
You can do it.
You can, yeah.
It was equally as painful for.
And you say, so I physically would take pictures when I, you completed this, I took a picture, so I. You know.
They have a few glitches in the system, but you're right, I think it's resolved itself, and, um, it's been much, much better, so. Um, unless you have any questions about the information that I emailed out last week, I would ask for a motion to approve the renewal contract with Keroch in the amount of twelve thousand eight hundred and fifty-two dollars. And authorize the chair to sign the renewal agreement and the indemnity agreements.
A motion and second to approve the renewal of the HIPAA, or the HIPAA. Uh, contract and signatures provided necessary. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
And I did actually send those out to John Keys last week, and he did email me back that he had no concerns, he, they worked with the exact same company, and he has reviewed the exact same agreements for Clinton County. He was good with that. First of all, as of December twentieth, Conservation had a vacancy in one of their naturalist positions, they interviewed and offered a position to Macy Yeager. Who was currently doing interpretive type services for Blankburgs in Des Moines, um, she lives in Preston. Um, and she has started with Conservation effective January twenty-second, which was Monday of last week. Um, it's a union contracted position with a starting wage of nineteen thirty-one an hour. I would just ask for a motion to approve the hire of Macy Yeager effective January twenty-second, including authorizing the county auditor to issue bi-weekly paychecks for the same.
Oh, man.
Sorry.
A motion and second to approve the hire of Macy Yeager to the Conservation, um, with. Terms presented, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried.
And then the jail has had three PRN vacancies, which are just people that we use on demand, on call, they don't have set schedules. With the anticipation of the transition to the new jail sometime soon, um, they went ahead and conducted interviews recently, and they did find three viable candidates that they had made conditional offers to. Um, they offer positions to Michael Reed, Virginia Brewer, and Tori Sullivan. Andrew was actually able to begin the jail school in-house, he's doing those trainings in-house now with them, Saturday. So we did, he did go ahead and make a conditional offer to them effective January twenty-seventh. Um, condition, the conditional is, um, make sure they have all pre-employment requisites completed. The only thing they have outstanding is the MMPI, and we actually send them to our psychologist in Dubuque, so getting those appointments takes a couple of weeks. Um, one of them has had it completed, but the other two are still waiting for their appointments, so they're considered conditional offers at this time until that is completed. The positions all currently have a starting wage of twenty-sixty-nine, and we increase them to twenty-one eighty-five at six months and twenty-two ninety-nine at one year. So I would ask for a motion to approve the conditional hire of Michael Reed, effective January twenty-seventh, twenty-four, including authorizing the county auditor to issue bi-weekly paychecks for the same.
Very good. Motion second to approve the conditional hire of Michael Reed as presented, all those in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carried.
And I would ask for a motion to approve the conditional hire of Virginia Brewer, effective January twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four, including authorizing county auditor to issue bi-weekly paychecks for the same.
Oh, wow.
Very good. Motion and second to approve the conditional hire of Virginia Brewer as presented, all those in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carried.
And I would ask for a motion to approve the conditional offer of, the conditional hire of Tori Sullivan, effective January twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four. Including authorizing the county auditor to issue bi-weekly paychecks for the same.
Very good. Motion second to approve the conditional hire of Tori Sullivan as presented, all those in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carried.
That's all I had?
That's it?
That's it.
Thank you.
Todd is here today?
Todd is here, yeah.
He is.
He's been in and out.
Thank you.
Alright. Uh, next on our agenda would be Beth Gerlock, our Jackson County Treasurer. Good morning.
Good morning. Got your packet?
I got it, I got it.
Did you get it figured out? Can you read it?
Um, yeah.
Somewhat. Alrighty, so I tried to make it easier by highlighting the numbers. And the packet that match. Um, the first report is the semi-annual report, this is what gets, uh, posted in the newspaper, published in the newspaper. Starting with July's balance, revenues, um, and then dispersments in the new fund balances of December. And then the outstanding warrants by the auditor. So you'll see the fund balance in December was the seventeen million eight twenty-eight, one twenty-one ten. Um, outstanding warrants there were seven hundred three thousand nine seventy-five twenty. And the next few pages just break down the revenue and dispersment column for those funds, so. Uh, it's just more detailed information on revenues. And for each fund, and then expenses for each fund up through December thirty-first. Um, to have the total on hand of seventeen million eight twenty-eight, one twenty-one ten by me. And then the next sheet is my daily balancing sheet, so I, um, work with this every day just to make sure, uh. We balance. And the numbers on here that, uh, we look at are cash in office. Um, that first column, the one hundred and thirty-four thousand sixty-four sixty-three as of December thirty-first. Uh, cash in the banks, which is seventeen million six ninety-four zero fifty-six forty-seven, and those two numbers added together is. The seventeen million eight twenty-eight, one twenty-one ten that we're looking at here. Um, to be accounted for. The other numbers, uh, in blue down below are what we had, um. Pending to get deposited into our bank account for online payments and for, uh, credit card and debit card. And those two numbers do show up on a few other reports, that's why I highlighted those. The next sheet is our, um, banking and investments balance sheet, so that just breaks down the bank account balances. To show the amount that we have. Um, which of course you'll, you've already seen that number in orange on the daily balance sheet in that middle, middle column. But the seventeen million six ninety-four fifty-six forty-seven, and what we had in the bank. The next, the sheet is a spreadsheet that I do every month for, uh. The cash balance sheet, to keep everything all on one, in one spot, basically for monthly balancing. So this sheet on the top half, you'll see all of the accounts on the left, um, the balance per the bank statement. The accrued interest for that month. And then, um, anything that's pending in the next few columns, such as outstanding check. And then um, anything that's pending in the next few columns such as outstanding checks. And as we talked about those online payments and uh, debit and credit card payments that we don't have. Deposited yet, so you'll see that orange number again in the middle of the sheet, that seventeen million six ninety-four fifty-six, forty-seven is there. And then the blue numbers again, which with the debit and credit card transactions and the, the online payments. Are far down below. Um, coming up with the total cash in office number that matched the daily balance sheet in yellow. And again, the green number seventeen eight twenty-eight, one twenty at the bottom. So that just shows that everything is balanced and then um, this next spreadsheet, the semi-annual settlement. Uh, breaks it down with what the auditors show on their reports that they provide me. So the first column is what the auditor's ledger um, shows. And then any warrants outstanding in those funds for each fund. And then the treasurer's ledger um, balance is the third column, so at the end of. That, which is on the next page for each fund, it's just showing that um, we did balance with the auditor's funds. Of seventeen million eight twenty-eight, one twenty-one, ten, once those outstanding warrants are accounted for. And on the next page again is a breakdown of what was in office um, for cash. At twelve thirty-one, twenty-three, so that total cash in office number again, you'll see in yellow. And the total cash on hand number again in green that we've seen a few times already. So that's there and then the next um, part of it breaks down the uh, crude interest that was not reconciled yet. Um, adding it in and then you'll see that total number in orange there of cash in banks. And then you'll break down even further, so you're in cash on hand. So we, the first page shows the amount of actual cash infling that we have in office, broken down. And then the next screen shows the bank account balances, um, investment account balances. And the next sheet shows the uh, certificates of deposit and their balances. And then even further breakdown of the debit and credit cards, so that number in blue there, we have to break that down for the auditors. They'll ask for the sheet, so that's why that's in there. And again, the, the online payments for the day that were still pending, that other number and wills is there. That's it.
Okay, any questions for Beth? I mean, we discussed briefly, um, and we've. Talked about, if I call them red flags, but there was nothing there that everything balanced and. Any other questions for Beth? Alright, and we need to approve the semi-annual report.
Does that work with questions? Do you need a signature from the board? I would add to, a motion to accept and authorize the publication and the signatures. And, and the board signatures of the county treasurer's semi-annual report in July first, twenty twenty-three to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. As presented by treasurer Beth Gerlock.
Motion and second to approve the and publish the semi-annual report with the signatures required. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carried.
I know, it's tiny.
Can we change the font on that?
I tried.
I know you did. I got mine to change, but I couldn't print it any bigger.
On the Excel, it didn't go any bigger either?
Orientated the wrong way, those were the hard ones, so.
Okay. Thank you, Beth.
You're welcome.
Lisa, you got through yours?
Yep.
Okay, uh, Luann?
Good morning.
Good morning. Alright, just the calendar this week. This afternoon at four o'clock is an early childhood Iowa um, council meeting in Dewitt or by Zoom, uh, for Nen, she wants to go to that. Tomorrow, January eleventh, at five P M was a new Mallory Abbey open house in Piazza. For any of you that um, wanted to attend, but Don is on that, that board, water shed, or water shed management authority. Um, but at six thirty is the Jackson County Hazard Vindication Plan Update Meeting One. For any of you, and I know we have to have one member there and I think we were trying to affect that we thought Don was going to that, so.
I intend to go, but less things change.
As long as we have one, I think. East City Hall, I think the agenda is on your desk. Um, Thursday, February first, at nine A M, we will have a union negotiation session um, in here. And that will be followed at nine thirty whenever we're done by a budget work session that will run until two o'clock.
Is that in here or I thought it was downstairs?
Uh, that may be. I don't know exactly where she set it up, so, okay. Um, nothing else on the calendar until our next regular meeting will be on Tuesday, February sixth at nine A M. And that evening at six o'clock is Jackson County Conference Board meeting, um, downstairs in the community room for all of you.
So this evening at six P M, there also is a ECIA special council meeting.
Tonight.
Yep, tonight, six P M. And that is either Zoom or in person.
Right, wait for it, and it's for you. Right.
Thank you. And uh, are there other commissions? Or boards? Discussion?
We talked about Iris already when Elizabeth was in here. They're working on that dresswear's division over in Bellevue. Again, they got basically everything ordered in, ready to go, so once the weather gets fit, they'll be.
Yeah, it'll be a mess, but it will be a wild, it's a wild project, that's for sure. That's their vital part of the community and they need some water.
They're, they just had some like trail funding or whatever that nobody applied for, so they're kinda trying to reopen it again and kinda change a few of the parameters to entice some projects. But other than that, it was a very short meeting.
Uh, what do you mean by trails? Something that.
Well, we're, I, I trying to get further definition. I asked if there's a way maybe we could do some things in Monmouth to kinda help with the mainstream. Right now it has to be trails and.
So it's something that Nathan Conservation's aware of.
Yeah, Josh Bolt was on the meeting, so.
Okay. I really don't have anything further to update. Uh, we'll take a short recess at this time. We will reconvene at this time and we've got a report from um. John Hanson or Jeremy Oden from Together or Midwest Construction?
They called and uh, just gave us a quick update over the phone. I talked to them and they said as far as the jail, the rolling storage will be going in Monday. Um, the, they're coming in to get that going, um. Um, they're checking on the locks a- after the flooring, then that, they're gonna start with the epoxy and get that going. Um, they're gonna check in maybe getting the occupancy rating for the admin portion. Sooner than the occupancy for the jail portion, so they can start moving in the admin and kinda getting that all situated, so. Um, things are going, it's going pretty good. It's just they're getting a lot of things going right now. He's got a lot of hires in the fire. As far as Together We Build, um, again, they're finishing up the epoxy flooring this week. And then the plumbers can come in, uh, the kitchen equipment should be showing up on February ninth and they'll get that done. They know they're under the gun because they got a couple of events scheduled, but they think it's pretty much after they get the plumbers done, it'll be tidy and work. And uh, they're anticipating to be done by the end of February before those events, so things are going pretty good.
Good news. Hopefully we can clear some of them up.
What are the events scheduled for, for the Together We Build? What are those events scheduled for?
Um, I think it's the twenty-sixth and twenty-eight. And they got a whole list of people waiting. Um, to, to look at what came in that room too, so it'll be, once it gets the all clear, it's gonna be. All hands on it, it's gonna be busy. Things change. But uh, yeah, as soon as they get the octagon seat every day, they think everything, right now, knocking wood, everything seems to be going pretty good. And John will be here next week for sure.
For an update?
For an update and all that, so.
Sounds good. Well, we hope to utilize that building for sure. Anything else before the board this morning?
Motion adjourned.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carried, meeting adjourned.